Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
Good evening. It is March 13th, 2025. The time is 6:30 PM. I'm convening this meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Hingham. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording? I'm not seeing any. I will turn to Ness just to ask, do you have a quorum of the school committee here?
I do not. I suspect I will have one shortly, but I don't have one just yet.
Okay, so then we will not ask you to call your meeting to order. Good. The first item on the agenda is discussion and possible votes on the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles. We have one, two, three, we have five articles here, Article R, QQ, RR, W, and WW. So we're going to start with Article R, which is the high school roof replacement. And Ness, I will turn it over to you to lead us in this discussion.
Thank you so much. I will preface this by saying this. We have been talking about the roofs for quite some time. However, at a Capitol Outlay meeting, it came up recently, within the last month, asking about some things that we were projecting on our five-year capital plan to include HVAC and RTU systems on top of the high school roof. So they asked the simple question, well, wouldn't it make sense to do that all together as you are looking to replace the roof so that you don't have to dig into a roof that has already been put down? Which is a very appropriate and appreciated question. So Ayesha and Katie have been working really hard trying to get a bunch of information together. We work with Habib, who are our house doctor, and they have provided a master plan for our facilities, and included in that process was the fact that we would need to look and assess our roofs. So we have been talking about roofs sometime, but we have an update as we are looking to apply for grant funding from the MSBA. We recognize this is not a situation where we can wait if we are denied with some of the schools, particularly the high school and possibly PRS. But we thought that we would give it a try, and Ayesha and Katie have an update on us from what they have been hearing of late, and they've got a presentation for us. So I'm going to pass it over to Katie and Ayesha.
Thank you, Ness, and I wanted to just thank everyone on the call for their partnership and their patience as we navigate through the MSBA process. Also wanted to thank Ayesha. She has spent quite a bit of time back and forth with the MSBA, consulting with various staff members there, including the MSBA Legal Council. She's also been reaching out to area business managers who are currently in the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program. And I similarly have been reaching out to my superintendent colleagues for advice and to also get some snapshots into those who are actually living the current MSBA experience in order to get a better sense of the timeline. I promise the presentation tonight will be significantly briefer than previous presentations. We've hopefully honed our message a bit and...
Sorry, before you go on...
I think you've got a quorum.
We do, yes. So I was going to call the school committee to order as of 6:34 and adopt the language read by the Chair at the start of the meeting. Thank you.
And let me just ask Ness, is this a noticed meeting for the school committee?
Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Terrific, thank you. So that one of the most optimistic pieces of news that we've received during our conversations with fellow superintendents and fellow business managers was the acceptance rate last year into the accelerated program for the MSBA was significantly higher than previous years. So last year, 70 applications were accepted into the accelerated program. In past years before that, it had been closer to the mid-20s of how many projects had been accepted. So that's positive news because there are 70 projects that will not be applying this time around. And so we're hoping that that improves our chances. And information that we did not previously have is there were 71 applications last year. And so of those 70 were accepted. So we had been hearing some feedback around the MSBA Core Program, which is the program that is used to build new buildings. Those acceptance rates are significantly lower, but at least last year, the state really put the pedal to the metal on getting some of these accelerated repair projects going. So challenging to say in the current climate if that will continue, but we thought that was really positive and optimistic news about our chances for being accepted into the program. And so I'm hoping to capture our current understanding of timeline in a single slide and again, promise to be as brief as we can. So we're currently in the process of submitting our statement of interest, which is due next Friday, March 21st. So thank you to Ayesha and Matt Meehan for their work on that.
Minimize the people so they can see your slide. I think it'll be helpful to them. Sorry.
That's okay. Apologies, Ayesha. And so in looking at the next step of the project, we would then be looking at roughly seven to nine months from our submission of the application. We'd be looking at acceptance somewhere between October and December of 2025. And speaking to area districts, many received notice in October, but we're getting feedback that given the complexity of our project with the rooftop units and potential heat pumps, it will probably push us closer to that December date. Then, once we have received that notice, we then have two options for receiving the vote of authorization of the needed schematics by the town. And this is somewhat new and revised information since the last time we spoke. So the authorization of the schematics must be approved by the town within 90 days of notice of our acceptance into the program. The challenge around that is if we are accepted in October of 2025, we would need to have the town meeting vote no later than January of 2025, which would necessitate... Sorry, 26, thank you. 26, which would necessitate an additional town meeting. Ayesha probed the MSBA further to see if we could vote to authorize the schematic design in advance of acceptance to the MSBA program. She spoke directly to their legal counsel, and he did share that they would approve that step, which would allow us to seek authorization at this year's April 2025 town meeting, which would avoid the expense of the additional town meeting. The MSBA council provided Ayesha with their specific language that would meet all of their requirements for the schematic design. I'll pause there just to see if there are any questions or if Ayesha would like to chime in on anything there.
Okay, Katie, just so I'm clear. Even though we would not know the specifics of the terms of our acceptance, we could still vote to approve the schematics, and the dollar amount associated with that, I think we will have a pretty good guess, but we won't really know until we actually get the terms of the approval from the MSBA. So whatever we vote will be better than our best guess, but not definitive.
Right.
Correct.
One of the things that I worked with Michelle on as well to Joe is that in the, in terms of the article itself, it says up to that amount, rather than it just being that amount itself. So that gives us a flexibility, so if it's less, et cetera.
Yep, got it.
Thanks for the clarifying question. And so beyond that point, once we have the vote for the schematics, whether that's in advance of the acceptance or after the acceptance, the MSBA will then assign us our owner's project manager, OPM, and designer. And we do not have choice in that matter. I did get some feedback from area superintendents that that process can, in some cases, take up to three, three months or so. And so that was helpful feedback from the superintendents living through the process at the moment. Once we have our project manager and designer, they will then authorize the completion of the schematic designs, which are then submitted to the MSBA approval. It's important to note that the MSBA board only meets every other month. And so that's often one of the bottlenecks and is one of the factors in the extended timelines that we're seeing in this MSBA process. And so again, the schematic designs would need to be, go to the board for approval. And so we are getting feedback that that phase can take anywhere from two to six months, depending on how you're hitting the MSBA board meeting cycle. After that point, then the board will then also need to approve the project scope and budget. Once we have that finalized scope and budget from the MSBA, we would then need to go back to town meeting to vote to authorize the local funding for the total cost of the project. For that, we have two options that will be time-dependent. If all of the sun and the moon and the stars align in the way that they need to, there is a chance that we could tack on to the April 2027 town meeting for the budget approval. However, if the timeline is significantly accelerated or slower than the April 2027 town meeting, we might again need to consider an additional special town meeting for approval of the full project scope and budget. After that point, we would enter the detailed design phase, which is estimated to take roughly three months. We would then enter a formal project funding agreement with the MSBA. And then the current estimate for beginning construction would be summer of 2028 with completion in summer of 2029. And so Ayesha, anything to add?
No, you're doing great.
So I'm just going to pause there and see if anyone had any questions on the timeline at all. Great. And so that leads us to some of the actual town meeting articles that we will need. So I'll pass it off to Ayesha for that.
Okay, hello, everyone. So in terms of that, our, our suggestion would be in terms of town meeting for this year, that we put forward five articles for this year. The first one being the high school schematic design and feasibility study, Plymouth River and South. We need to, we believe and the school committee as well also believes that it would be good to continue to have the 2017 School Building Committee be the basically reviewer and authorizer of the project, of project itself. So we'll expand the role of the 2017 School Building Committee. And one of the things that we're requesting as part of the articles for this town meeting would be an extraordinary account. And we're asking for approximately $1.2 million, which will act as an insurance policy. Because the roof construction will, project will end in 2029. It's a long time to be... We were hoping when we first began those discussions that we would be done, maybe be able to start construction as early as this or even next year. But because of the timeline with the MSBA, we want to make sure that we have some kind of security that if anything goes wrong, that we can have an insurance policy or some kind of funds available for repairs or in the case of HVAC, if it is that we will need, we would need to purchase a new HVAC system as well for the high school. We did a similar, we did have a similar extraordinary account for Foster. And in terms of that extraordinary account with Foster, there's $190,000 left in that account. And as part of the, this article, we're asking the town to also transfer the remaining balance of the funds in that extraordinary account to this roof account, roof and HVAC account as well. Stop again for questions. Okay. And I think Katie kind of alluded and mentioned this before, but we've been working with town and MSBA council to make, to review those articles and to make sure that everything is in line with what should be included for the town warrants. Okay. The next thing that we need to look at is the cost of the articles in terms of what we've received in terms of estimates. For the Plymouth River, these estimates have been put together by Habib. And we've, one of the things that we have been doing as well is that we've been looking at going back to review, as Katie mentioned as well. We've been having those conversations, we have begun to have those conversations with school building, school business managers, just to kind of get a sense as to how much those schematic designs cost. And we haven't gotten anything definitive as yet in terms of the cost of those. So we're still working with the estimates from Habib. But we're trying to compare the estimates that we received from Habib with some of the live costs that we're seeing in terms of the actual schematics that are happening at this point in time to compare those to what we have in terms of an estimate right now. So that work is still ongoing in terms of just kind of vetting the estimates to make sure that it's reasonable. But what we're asking for right now is for Plymouth River, the Habib estimate is at 370, the South estimate is at 320. And for the high school, the roof estimate is 750, the solar is 60. The HVAC is a part that is a little bit more than even I had anticipated in that it is, what they, what Habib has quoted to us is that it's about 8.7% of the total project cost, which is 2.5 million, which gives us a total of 3.3 million in terms of the high school design costs and feasibility. The extraordinary maintenance account, we've discussed earlier. Any questions here? Okay. In terms of next steps, it would be just a vote on those articles. Also, from the, from the Select Board's perspective, we'll also need a vote on the SOI, which will be part of our submission to the MSBA. Joe, once we finish the SOI next week, you will get an email and we'll be asking for your John Hancock on the SOI as well. It will be a three-part signature, which will be the Chair of the School Committee, Katie Roberts, as well as yourself to sign off on the SOI before it gets submitted next Friday.
So I want a board vote, Select Board vote authorizing me to sign the SOIs?
Yes, please.
Okay. Which I think we can put on our agenda for next Tuesday.
I think the agenda, Michelle, the agenda include approval of the SOIs as well for tonight.
You did put an updated statement of interest on as item number three, if the board would like to consider it.
Yes, please.
Oh, I see. Okay. Anything else on your list before we? And I don't want to further interrupt your...
No, that's okay.
So I suspect we each have a number of questions, and I will do my best not to hog the floor. I'm going to go back to the beginning of this discussion, which is that doing the roofs, it made sense to, basically, the question was asked at Capitol Outlay, what about doing RTUs and the HVAC at the same time? Do we have an opinion from someone who installs these things that that is necessary? And the reason I ask is I actually talked to someone who does that, and they said, well, quite frankly, the RTUs, they typically have a bay, and you drop the RTU in, you can lift it right off in a crane, and it really does not require much disturbance of the roof, unless there's something unique about the way the high school roof currently is or would be repaired. So I just want to make sure that that question has been looked at and that the school committee has an answer that it's, that it's necessary from a technical standpoint, because again, what I've heard is it's not always necessary. And that, that sort of was the beginning premise. So can someone tell me what due diligence has been done to confirm that we need the HVAC and RTU work done at the same time as the roof?
I think just taking a step back and answering a slightly different question. We know that the rooftop units are the same model in year and installation date as the RTUs at South School that have failed. So there's a question of the integrity of the RTUs and will they last much longer? And again, given that we do have this opportunity for MSBA funding, it is again, very likely, given the rate at which the South RTUs failed, that we are looking at the 13 RTUs at the high school. We have one that is all but, all but gone already. And that is new information since we last spoke. It is, we've...
Number nine, yeah.
RTU number nine, it has essentially failed.
Number nine, it's a real problem.
Yeah, exactly. And so, but it's like when you move into a new house and buy all of the appliances at the same time, they all tend to fail at the same time. And so it's a very real risk that the 13 RTUs that we have will not make it, you know, several years. And so, so there's that piece of it, which wasn't the specific question that you asked. There was that second piece of it with regard to the integrity of the roof. And Ayesha, I don't know, I know Matt had kind of discussed that during his conversations with us, so.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of, just in terms of, from my understanding of it, is that in terms of keep, the thing, the thing about a roof is that even on installation of a roof, you could, you could install a roof today, and a part of the process of installation is that tomorrow you may see that you have parts of the roof that leak right after, just because, and that's where the warranty is so important in terms of that and going back and making sure that it's, everything is, in terms of the integrity of the roof is good. And I think from what, from what we've been told, that you want to restrict the amount of...
Punctures.
Punctures and, and changes and updates to the roof as, as much as possible to ensure the longevity of the roof. And that's the information that we've, we've gathered.
So I, I think there's two points. The first point, which Katie makes, and it's really important, is that to the extent that we can get funding for, for this from MSBA, it makes sense to do it all at the same time. However, I think we're following two paths, which is we're starting with this coming town meeting, not knowing if we're going to be getting MSBA. We're proceeding with some warrant articles which will allow us to do MSBA. But if it turns out that we are not accepted, we also intend to move forward. And so I'm looking at that second path, which is if the town moves forward on its own without MSBA, whether or not it's necessary to do the HVAC and RTUs now. And maybe it is, but I've not heard an answer to that technical question, which would be relevant only, I think, if we do not get accepted in the MSBA program.
I would say that in the event that we aren't accepted into the MSBA, then the town can vote separately on that at our own town meeting. So again, you certainly could divorce the two, but it does seem to make sense to do the schematic so we do have a true sense of the full scope of the project for current or future decision-making. And so either way, the position that we'll, we'll be in at the time, I think it would be helpful to have the full scope of the project. And so again, we're at least a year out from that specific conversation.
Right. And just to add one other important, one of the, in terms of the questions that we put to the MSBA as well, was in terms of the feasibility study, what is involved with the feasibility study? And I think that even the response that we got back from them is an important, is important information to share in that the feasibility study will provide options to us in terms of what is, what is needed as well. And there'll be a full evaluation even above and beyond what we've done ahead of town, ahead of this conversation. There'll be a feasibility to the study to determine, should the roofs be repaired or should they be replaced? In terms of the HVAC systems as well, the feasibility will have to look at those different systems as well and provide information on that. So I think even just going through that process, if we do get accepted or if we don't, and we get that information, it will be helpful to us in terms of having that a clear path of our next steps based on what is gathered from this process.
I'll ask one more question, then I'm going to turn it over to Bill and then to Liz. We have articles for the high school, Plymouth River, and South School. With the high school being the highest priority and the largest dollar amount, are we better positioned with a single shot article that is only the high school? Are we better positioned with the MSBA? And if we do all three schools, does it give the MSBA an out saying, oh, we'll help Hingham, but it'll be Plymouth River, which is less expensive, and then we, we lose our, the opportunity for the high school? What is your sense as to what strategy maximizes the likelihood of MSBA focusing on the high school and giving us the high school?
What was very interesting to us, and again, was new information, is we knew the number of projects that were funded last year, 70 projects. We did not understand that there were only 71 applications. Of those applications, several of them were from the same district. And so I'll let Ayesha speak to this. She actually has a personal connection to one of the superintendents who was able to get multiple projects funded.
Right. So and I guess the only difference between, for example, Holyoke and Springfield would be that those schools in terms of their financial, financial strains and, and ability may be a little bit less than ours. But in some cases, they had up to five roofs that will be in repaired or replaced, including windows and doors as well. And that was definitely new information to us in terms of, of the fact that multiple schools will be in repair as part of those projects. will be in repaired as part of those projects, and there were multiple projects. Um, one of the things that the MSBA has done even as early as um January of this year is that we had a visit from the MSBA. And one of the things that they have been doing is visiting all the schools within Massachusetts to log the needs of the schools so that they can project how much funding is needed for the school, for school repairs going forward. And as part of that assessment that they did, initial site visit and assessment was to go to all our schools with the roofs and windows, doors, um, and energy needs as well to document that information. Another thing that MSBA has included on their website and even as part of a a um a virtual webinar we attended, they encouraged us to apply for every all all our needs. And as part of their process, they would help us determine what is the what was the 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 guest need in terms of what needs to be um replaced or repaired um as part of that process as well. So Joe, the question, I do not think that it would be an issue. If it if it will be, I think it's a discussion that we could have with the MSBA as well.
Okay. Bill, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Yeah, so I just wanna um just be clear on the plan. Uh, so if town meeting votes favorably on these articles this year and we get accepted into the MSBA program, did I hear correctly that the big ask would be Tom, spring, either special in late twenty-six or spring of twenty-seven town meeting? Did I hear that correctly?
Correct, that would be for the full.
Okay. It'll be the full party. So um and the extraordinary fund is kind of it just it just more contingencies. If the roof fails, you're gonna patch it, X, Y, and Z. Okay. And and I and I get the need for the extraordinary fund. I mean, with Foster, I think it took us three times now to get to get funding there, right? Finally got another third try. Meanwhile, while we were waiting, I mean, the school was just falling apart. I mean, it really impacted quality of learning in that that environment. And I can personally attest to it because my kids were subjected to it. Um, we don't want to do that again. Um, meanwhile, costs drove up a lot. So okay, I think that's all I got right now. I might circle back with some additional questions based on Liz's questions, but thank you.
Thank you.
Liz.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe, and thank you for being here and Katie, Ayesha, the presentation. You kind of referenced this, Katie, but um do we have a sense of how much the MSBA funding will be impacted by the federal funding cuts? Like, I I don't want to go down this path if there's just no way this is coming through.
Yep. So we we are certainly in an existential crisis, no doubt. Um, however, MSBA is you know, signaling that they are proceeding full speed ahead. There has been no signal otherwise. So to us, it makes certainly makes sense to submit our SOI uh next week. Uh, again, if um the sky falls and uh the money is simply not there, we at least, I think, you know, have a responsibility to have all of our ducks in a row to pursue the funding, um, should it be there. And again, thus far, um, and I know that the news cycle is still very fresh. Um, there has been no signal from the MSBA other than that they would be proceeding with funding. And again, we've been in very frequent uh contact with them and Ayesha has had um sometimes twice, three times daily phone calls, and they're not in any way signaling that building project funding. But certainly, that news cycle could change tomorrow and if it does, obviously.
I know, it's not guaranteed, but.
I'm gonna follow up with that because I asked that exact question to Ray Estes, who's had a fair amount of experience with with the MSBA. He said the MSBA funding is paid from one penny from our sales tax. And so it's not dependent at all on on federal funding. As long as people are paying sales tax, uh, the revenue is here in the state and that's what funds MSBA.
Okay, all right, that's helpful. And and I agree, you know, moving forward with the SOI and even I think it makes sense most likely to get um the authorization um in advance from town meeting. Um, I am concerned about the timeline, though. I mean, best case scenario, this isn't done till summer of twenty twenty-nine. I don't know about the elementary schools, and you probably have more flexibility now with Foster, but the high school, that does not seem like a reasonable situation.
And they will work, you know, on a section at a time, so hopefully would be prioritizing, you know, um, sections of the building strategically and so on. But unfortunately, in our conversations, um, again, the optimistic news that we receive was the likelihood of us receiving funding. Um, the less optimistic news was there's really no moving. Their timelines where we're bound by their every other month meeting cycle, and uh we are at their mercy with regard to stages of the project, like receiving our OPM and so on. And so um that certainly grateful for a thirty forty, thirty to forty percent reimbursement rate, but what comes with that is the the slower um slower timeline, so.
Right. Have we done projections about what the cost will be in twenty twenty-nine versus, you know, how much we could potentially receive from MSBA? I mean, I know that with Foster, certainly waiting the three rounds did not make fiscal sense in the end, so you know, don't want to repeat that pattern.
Given the current state of tariffs and such, it's makes it my crystal ball is even more imperfect than it was uh a few weeks ago. So yeah, so I it's very challenging to predict, so.
But to be clear, we're not waiting for a second round. This is a one round, and if we're not in, we're gonna move forward o- on our own.
That's that was my understanding. Is that what the school committee also agrees with?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to add something, Bill?
No, I had another question that you you made me think of when you're when you're done, Liz. I didn't mean to add, I didn't want to interrupt.
No, no worries. So the schematic designs, obviously, we would use those whether we go forward or accepted into MSBA or we have to go it alone, right? That design would work would already be completed.
Yes.
Okay, and we has that gone out to bid? Like, where did those quotes come from?
So I just want to clear that up a bit.
Let's go back one one second. Um, so basically what happens, we haven't gone out to bid on the schematic designs yet. What happened, we wait on MSBA for that. In terms of the timeline, the way it works is that um we get accepted into the program and then we are assigned um an OPM and a designer from the MSBA. And at that point, we're able to get schematic designs um and get the detail costing and everything else done from from that as well, and then go out to bid on on, for example, construction costs, et cetera. So those um schematic design costs came from an estimate from Habib and Associates, who's the house doctor, um, engineer.
Okay. Okay, so the that so that could go up or down?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, and then just a question about solar. And maybe this comes later in the process, but is has anyone done the payback analysis on that to to ensure that we should actually move forward with solar as part of this project?
In terms of the solar, um, from what we looked at, um, the payback, it's not going to be a complete payback in terms of the fifteen-year span of having the solar in the we're looking, we look at about a four-point-five million dollar cost of it, of the solar. And given fifteen years and the amount of savings on the electricity part of it, we don't think that it'll be a complete payback for the fifteen to twenty years. Um, so I think it's more of a value judgment rather than a a cost, full cost than that. We'll let it reduce our costs, definitely. And um for each year that we um, we have electricity within the building and that's rising. Um, it's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the high school in terms of electricity for the high school. At least it has been. Um, let's add six percent on that in terms of the increase in HMLPs um bills for this year, right? The way we look at it in terms of on a on a the the range of reduction in the cost could we see as a range of about thirty to seventy percent? Seventy percent being a best case scenario in terms of we have light all the time, we don't have dark days in terms of when we have, we don't have snow as much. We don't, but it's so unpredictable in terms of um New England weather that we it's difficult to say definitively what those cost reductions will be. Um, in terms of that, it could, we definitely will see reductions in costs by having solar, but it won't be a full payback.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Well, so Liz, let me just follow up on that question. For these three buildings, do you know where they are on the HMLP priority list?
Yes.
And so where 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 are they? High, low?
The high school is high. PRS was also on the higher side, but we've subsequently learned that um on PRS, the roof structure is not as strong as we would like it to be. So in terms of having um solar on that building, it would not be very likely that that would happen unless we did something to shore up the roof as well.
And South School is very low on the list.
Very low. So, thank you.
Bill.
Um, so just uh one question in the comment. So, uh, Michelle, Tom, um, I guess we'd be looking at fund balance here, financing?
Yeah. Yes.
I would say so. We you could technically borrow for design work. You have to pay it back in five years, but in the past, we typically haven't borrowed for design work because then you end up paying debt service for a project that may or may not go forward. Um, so we typically borrow later for the construction.
Okay, thank you. And just uh just a quick comment, you know, I we we toured the the different buildings during the capital tour in the fall. And the evidence of the high school roof failing is is very clear. I mean, the brown marks uh in different parts of the building, particularly library. I think I went back to the high school on a day of torrential rain and literally saw water pouring through uh places up there. And when a roof fails, the entire structure eventually fails. Electrical gets in impact, walls get impacted. It's 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 a significant failure for a structure. And I, you know, I saw the evidence with my own eyes that, you know, we need to move forward with this and move forward relatively quickly. So thank you.
Yeah, we definitely need that testimony.
Um, so, make sure my yeah, my mic is on. Um, so when we initially discussed this, I my recollection is that we were considering at the upcoming town meeting a vote that would allow us to proceed if we did not have MSBA funding, and then a second series of votes that would be associated with MSBA funding. Am I correct that now we only have that second series? We we don't have the initial vote for where we could proceed with the project in the event that MSBA does not materialize?
Um, in terms of my my understanding of of this, um, um, Joe, is that the way the article is written, it says that um we'll get the funding um regardless of how much MSB provides to us. So it so my for the schematic designs. So in terms of my interpretation of it is that if we did get zero percent in terms of MSBA funding, it would mean that we would move ahead and we would have to bear the full burden of that cost.
Okay. And if we do not get MSBA funding, is there a need to proceed with South School?
So we have, you know, sort of made needs known. We have um one extremely urgent roof, one very urgent roof. And, you know, again, we've certainly given you the order of priority. The high school, um Plymouth River and South School. So the South School roof is unlikely to ma- be anything less than Plymouth River and um the high school current state if we wait for the next round of MSBA. And so um I do think, um, again, it's at the moment, number three. But by the time we'd be talking about applying again for MSBA funding, we'd, you know, we're looking at completing a potential roof at the high school in twenty twenty-nine. So two years from now, uh, we'd be talking uh twenty thirty-one. So my kids would be long gone. Ayesha's kids would be long gone. Um, uh, so again, that's 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 a lot of time um for the the roof that is already compromised to continue um to fail. Um, so that would would be the gamble. Um, but again, in terms of urgency, we've, I think, clearly articulated um the extreme urgency of the high school. And there's the added component there that it's just a large student body that simply could not be uh accommodated in any other way than um at that building. Um Plymouth River, uh, we we've had a very challenging winter at Plymouth River School. Um, the even though we didn't have extreme amounts of snow, we had a lot of wind and ice and um so on. And so Plymouth River, we've had a more challenging um winter than we even predicted. So uh, we had to replace one, I think it was twenty by forty patch of roof um that our own in-house roofers could not um fix, and that was to the tune of twenty-two thousand dollars. So um, those twenty-two thousand dollar and, you know, repair projects are going to add up as as these roofs um continue to fail.
Sure, but you know, as you know, we're looking at a number of capital projects. We've got you know, the Center for Fractal Living coming up. And so there there are many worthy projects we need to prioritize prioritize. What I'm asking is, is it appropriate for us to be prioritizing South School when we have other other competing needs? Uh, it sounds like it's not in the same class, although you'd like to get it done.
Right. And I think just to add on to that, I think I just want to just go back to something I said earlier as well to Joe, in that I think the fact that we will have those that feasibility money as well is so important. Um, and I I I believe that even in terms of getting that assessment done, we may come out with a response that says, okay, maybe for South, um, there's there's an appetite to repair certain parts of it um now and then move forward in that sphere, right? And may not be a full replacement as with the other schools. So I think it's important for us to move forward to get that information and have a clear picture of where we're going to rather than just um not not making that getting that information at all.
Got. So if I can perhaps add in a commentary is that doing the design does not commit us to do the construction. And so it what it may be that we prioritize doing that a little later, but at least we'll have the design work done. Does that affairs?
Exactly. And what's different about South School is because it has a sloped roof at different varying angles, um, it it's very different than having a flat roof.
Exactly.
Which water pools. And so again, there is a likelihood that the MSBA will come back and say section A of the roof is has failed. Section C and D might get you another, you know, four or five years. And so, you know, we're open to um taking that feedback and and getting that more detailed assessment, so.
Right.
Um, let me let me ask Tom and Michelle something. When the select board or or AdCom approves funding for schematics of, you know, nor you know, north of three million dollars, what level of due diligence do we do on that assessment? I mean, we've got a number total of three-point-three million. I've seen no backup. Um, I'm sure the school committee has, but to what extent is it appropriate for this board or for AdCom to to look at the documents and say, hey, yeah, we get it why it's three-point-three million. Is that typical or we just move on because the school committee has told us that this is the right number?
Yeah, I mean, I can attempt to ask it, answer it. I I think that um if you ask them, they would probably provide you with the information you you want. And then we have an opportunity to to review it for another meeting if you weren't comfortable tonight, or you can vote based on your comfort level with what they're telling you.
Well, I'm I'm I guess what I'm what I'm asking is and maybe I could be wrong, but my recollection, for example, of public safety building, when when there were these these costs, we we got the documents, we looked at them and said, yes, we understand where how it's coming from. Do, since this is coming from the school committee, I I'm trying to understand how it's typically done. Just give me, I'm looking for some guidance from history.
Yeah, um, I don't remember how we did it. Ayesha, do you remember? Uh, Katie, you you were a teacher, I think, when we did, when we started planning Foster. Ayesha, you were working with John at the time. Did um did all of the documents from all the bids and the quotes go over to the board prior to their article support?
Or an executive summary or something?
Right. In terms of um, in terms of Foster, um, because the timeline was and and the PRS into the accelerated windows, because the timeline was a little bit different, um, I think we were able to go to town meeting with those documents ahead of time. I think in this case, we're trying to get ahead of the MSBA a little bit in terms of having those um estimate, going on estimates. In terms of the support that you need, um, Habib has provided us with information on the estimates. Um, we can have them um put the high school estimates in a document and provide that to you as well.
I mean, so we present this at town meeting and and we're asked, have you looked at the at the basis for the three-point-three million? What's what's my answer is no, or or we heard it from the school committee that was sufficient?
Well, we can we can. Well, we can, we can provide you with that support as well.
Okay. I mean, I, I'm with Bill and Liz. I mean, the work clearly needs to be done. And this is, this is moving forward, actually not on the construction, but on the design. And there's, there's no question. But these dollar amounts, Ayesha, you, you even mentioned the 2.5 was, was not, not within where you were expecting it. And I, I, I would be, I would prefer to see where this is coming from, rather than just say, let's, let's just vote on it.
Okay. That's fair.
Bill, Liz, you have any, any thoughts on that?
Yes. I mean, I think we should see the documentation so we can feel like we have vetted it and done our due diligence. I think the bigger question, and maybe what you're alluding to, Joe, is does AdCom have enough time between now and town meeting to do their level of due diligence, which is a far granular level of detail than ours generally. So I think that's an open question. Hopefully, they can get, get it done in time. I mean, my, my initial reaction is absolutely, we should move forward with this. I think it makes sense for us to review the documentation as much as we can between now and Tuesday. But I will say I'm absolutely very concerned with 2029. I do not, I have spent a lot of time in the high school. That roof will not survive till 2029.
Yep. And so in that regard, the extraordinary maintenance account, that 1.2 million, does that include the leftover amount from, from Foster?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So, so, so it's new money of basically a million?
Yes, please.
Right. Okay. And is there some sort of analysis that came up with the 1.2 million? Why, why that's the right number?
Yes. And I can provide that as well. It was based on the fact that for our current South RTU unit, the bids that under, underwork that's happening right now, it was approximately 500,000 for, for one of the RTUs to be replaced in the cafeteria itself.
Yeah.
That was, that was the beginning basis for that. And the fact that we have at least one RTU, well, one and one RTU at the high school that's failing. And in terms of the roof repairs that we're seeing right now.
Yep. And I've told you before that, to the extent that we can accelerate the timeline by calling a special town meeting, if, if in fact, that will do some good, I think this board would, I mean, we don't want to spend the money on a special town meeting, but we don't want to delay the project. So, you know, if we need to convene a special town meeting in December or January, so that we have got an extra couple of months in moving forward, we're not voting on that now, but I would certainly be in favor of doing that.
Right. And in terms of, yes, we were at, we were at MSBA's, we'll see in terms of the timeline. But in terms of when we get to October, and should they say to us, you are invited into the program, the first thing we need from you in 90 days would be your vote. We can see here is the vote language and here is the vote documentation. And that's one checklist, one check mark done.
Right.
Seen at least two, two schools that had to wait until December for the town meeting. We could have that in October to them the week after they vote. So it may, would it increase our chances in terms of the speed of things happening? I can't say emphatically yes.
Right.
I mean, my mind, I think that by having it ahead of time by two months, it may help.
Yep. Got it. Okay. Any other questions?
The only question I had is, Ayesha and Katie, do you guys need the SOI vote tonight?
We'll need it before the 20th, the 20th, at least.
I thought you needed it before the 15th. Okay. All right.
I, I mean, the only hold up would be that we can't submit the, the SOI with MSBA before having that. And we wanted to get it done early so that we can have those signatures from both Joe, Ness and Katie.
So John, Tom, has John reviewed this, the form of the vote for us to move forward with?
We talked to him about the vote language that was in your vote list, the form of the SOI vote. Michelle, do you know offhand if he saw that one?
I don't know. I think that comes from the MSBA.
Yeah, I think that's directly from Asia and the MSBA.
I mean, I, I think that's, that I think requires the least due diligence of anything. So I, I think I want to make sure that we move forward with the SOI. Again, as long as it's in the right form. So just looking at the document, I noticed that the SOI proposed vote, it's talking about an open meeting on March 10th as opposed to March 13th.
March 13th, yes.
I think we sent you a new one just before the meeting, Joe, new vote list?
Yes.
Oh.
That has the March 13th date.
It does.
I'm looking at the wrong one. Let me see here. You're right. There it is.
Joe, while you're looking at that, can I just ask one more clarifying? And I, I think you said this, but I just wanted to confirm that the feasibility study is part of the 3 million?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question. Ayesha, the, the statement of interest vote at the very end, it says the school committee here.
Yes, exactly.
Should we make that the select board also?
Yes, please.
Okay.
It should be the select board?
It should be the select board. Thank you.
That's what I thought. Okay.
I mean, Joe, do you just want to hold out to Tuesday night too?
Yeah. Yeah, we can just.
I mean, we can hold that.
Again, as, as long as you tell me that that won't hurt your.
Yes, the 18th, too late, Ayesha?
It will be fine. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the only reason I brought it up is I thought the deadline was the 15th. Okay.
Appreciate it. Yeah. I mean, if we can hold it, we'll just wait to Tuesday night, as long as it doesn't have a detrimental impact on the, on the ask.
Yep. So this is, this has really been a informative presentation, not only in terms of substance, but in terms of the procedures that we need to follow. So when can we get the, the backups for the numbers so that we can do our due diligence? Can we get that possibly tomorrow?
We will go and get that to you tomorrow.
Oh, great. So then we can put this on our agenda for Tuesday. We've not yet posted Tuesday, or have we?
We'll be posting after this meeting for Tuesday night.
Okay. So we'll, we'll, we'll add this so we can do votes. And so we are talking, I'm sure. So these are the, all five Warren articles. High school roof replacement, Plymouth River South, and those three, that's P, Q, Q and R, R, and all of those will be in a form acceptable to MSBA. And they're all being done in advance of, of being admitted to the MSBA program. Article VV, which is a school building committee charge, charge. Can I ask, has, has the school building committee accepted this charge? Are they going to move forward with this?
To be determined. I guess I'm saying to be determined, but one of the things the school committee discussed on Monday was that basically the school building committee is a, is a body in terms of who will actually be part of that body will be determined as well, in terms of the future of that body.
Right.
It's on the agenda for the 19th to discuss as well in terms of continuity as a body.
So if I ask in our next meeting, if the school building committee will accept this charge, will you be able to say yes?
No. Yes, I can.
Okay.
In terms of yes, in terms of, yes, in terms of as a body, not in terms of people.
Yeah, right. Okay. We, we don't need the names behind the board. We just need to know the commitment of the board to do it.
Exactly.
I want to note that Joe will not be a select board member next year. So.
I was thinking that same thing, Bill. Excellent.
And then we'll move on to the extraordinary capital repair fund. And so for that, we will also get some money for the, I mean, not some money, we'll, we'll get some sort of basis for, for how that, I'm skipping over several things here. How, how that, how that number, the 1.2 million, how that, how you came up with that?
Yes.
Okay. So that's item number two on our agenda. Item number three is updated statement of interest for MSBA for the high, I'm sorry. Oh, this is the SOI. Right. So we're going to get that language handled. I think that's, that's everything on our agenda, other than public comment. Katie, any final words of wisdom for us?
No, just very grateful for everyone's support and patience as we kind of wade through this complicated process. And everyone has answered my call, including Tom and Michelle and Art and everyone when I've called. So appreciate the partnership on this. So.
Well, as you know, you, as well as the school committee, are highly valued by this board, by the town administrative staff. And so we really appreciate all the work that you've done.
Thank you, Ayesha. I credit Ayesha for being very persistent with the MSBI. So.
Great. And Ness, you, you've been chairing a hardworking committee. Is there anything else you wanted to add on this?
I am just grateful for all of the partnership and everybody remaining patient. And I, I appreciate Katie and Ayesha. I know that they're working around the clock, literally around the clock. So truly grateful for everything that you've done. So yeah, thank you.
And so, Tom, assuming we vote all this at our Tuesday meeting, where does this put the advisory committee?
Well, I'm going to go talk to them right now as soon as we're done here. If they don't throw tomatoes at me, I'm going to talk them into taking this up Tuesday night after your vote.
Okay.
Although I fully expect the tomato throwing.
And you can let.
We have goggles for you.
I'm assuming that when you send us the backup, you'll also send it over to AdCom so that they're, okay, they're comfortable. Good. So then I will ask if there's any member of the public who would like to comment on items not on the agenda. Seeing none, I can't believe we have this on the, the select board and town administrator reports.
No, no.
Do you have anything? Michelle?
Nope. Thank you.
Tom?
No, thank you.
Liz?
No.
Bill?
No.
Everyone gave the right answer. It's so impressive. So thank you all. I am prepared to accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call. Oh, before I do, I'm going to ask Ness to adjourn her group.
I no longer have a quorum, so I do not need to adjourn.
Okay. Then I'll take a vote, roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an A as well. We are adjourned. See you all on Tuesday.
Thanks, everybody.
We recognize that taking time to visit, call, or email our town departments to report issues in Hingham doesn't always fit your schedule. Are you looking for an easier way to communicate with the town? Well, now there's an easier way. With the MyHingham mobile app, you can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps of your phone. To get started, simply download the MyHingham app from the Apple App Store or Google Play, or simply scan our QR code to get the access to the app that's best for your phone. Once you've opened the app, select the Submit a Service Request button. From there, you can choose the type of request you want to submit, whether it's a pothole, a fallen tree, or something else. You'll then be prompted to take a photo of the issue and provide a brief description. You can also use the app to track the status of your issue and receive updates. Using MyHingham puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, information about our boards, committees, departments, and services. So why wait? Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease.